Okay. This is the regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on November ninth, two thousand twenty-two at seven thirty first, uh, seven thirty P M. Pursuant section thirteen of the open public meetings that adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics to Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with Clerk of Princeton on November fourth, two thousand twenty-two, excuse me, and has been posted to the municipal website, W W W Princeton N J dot gov slash meeting. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by executive order number two ninety-two in accordance with the Emergency Remotes Public Meeting Protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public. Notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and the Times and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and ought to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, the Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have also been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex.
Claudia Michael Floyd is, uh, in the attendees list.
Yes, he's not attending, he's not participating.
Okay. He has a conflict, he's in within the two hundred foot, uh, noticing.
Good, thank you.
May I proceed with a roll call?
Yes, please.
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floyd? Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
I'm here.
Ms. Donna? Yes. Chairman Cohen?
Here. Claudia, can I ask you to, uh, I can't find my copy of the agenda, can I ask you to, uh, introduce the, uh, oh, actually, yeah, introduce the, uh, the first case?
Uh, only have one case done, it is seventeen Carnahan Place.
Okay, and the case number?
Uh, hold on, I don't have the agenda handy, one second.
Two fifty-six, twenty-two dash two fifty-six.
Okay, thank you. Claudia, are all the notices in order?
That will be after, uh, Ms. Casey, she will let you know.
Karen. Yes, yes, they are, they are. They are, um, correct, and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um, Derek, could you, uh, read your memo, please?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Derek, let me just swear you in for the evening, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, now, seek at the coup is the owner of sixteen Carnahan Place, and she is seeking a C two variance to permit the approval of a carport that has been installed, installed, and it's an exception to the required front yard setback. The property is located in the R eight zone in the former Princeton Township. Um, the single family use is permitted as a right, the subject lot is complying with respect to the applicable bulk requirements. The applicant constructed a ten by sixteen carport in the front yard of her house over her garage, or excuse me, over a driveway, um, and encroaches into the required twenty-five foot setback. The proposed setback is eight point six four feet, and she has requested consideration under the C two, uh, criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
I, I, I understand also this was done without building permits?
I, yes, sir, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, you please, uh, I guess the applicant can now, uh, you're muted, so, um, if you can unmute your mic and, uh, introduce yourself, be sworn in and then introduce yourself.
Out eight. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can hear you, Ms. Duck, who we, we can't, there we go, now we can see you too. Um, we need to swear you in, if you would raise your right hand.
Yes.
Do you swear, or, that's fine, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
First, I want to apologize for asking, uh, permission after the fact, but I had a very eventful summer, um, if a friend was in the hospice and then myself, I had a medical adventure, so that's why I applied after the fact, and I apologize for that. Now, uh, as you have seen in the letters I sent around, uh, this structure is, is really pretty inobtrusive. It just covers my car from bird droppings and, and stuff. And, uh, because there was a, a tree next to the house, I could not put the, this onion-like carport next to the house because it, living, living in this house for several years now, I know branches fall during the, uh, when there is a storm, um, so I, I had to avoid that, and it's inobtrusive, it, it's supported, uh, by two, uh, steel posts that are cemented. Uh, the roof is clear, polycarbonate, so you can see the sky, so it is not something that, if you permit me to say, it's not an offensive structure, um, and it really covers the place where my car is usually parked because I, I avoid parking it next to the tree because of the danger that branches would fall down. That's all I can say.
Okay, um, does anybody, any of the board members have any questions of the applicant? Well, I have a question, why, why did you, why did you build it without any permits?
Because I, I had, I had a medical emergency basically, and while I had planned to ask for permission the end of July, um, I was appended by a, a series of events that required hospitalization and then sort of things rolled with my being focused on something else, basically.
No, I can, I can appreciate that, um, but did you have a contractor do this?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Was he licensed?
Yes, it's, it's called C M remodeling, and, uh, I, I got him from the Home Depot, who, and I, I have actually his estimate, and the estimate is dated the end of June, but it was at the end of June that I have my medical emergency.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, the, here you have a medical emergency, thank goodness you're okay, but.
Then that's why, what I'm trying to say, that's why I did not, I did not ask on, in time like I have done with all my previous, uh, you know, because I had like, the shed replaced and the deck replaced, and I always ask permission before doing anything. But this time, you know, I was sort of, sort of, there was an avalanche of.
No, 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 you, I'm, I understand, please, I'm not, I can appreciate your situation very much, though. Did, um, your, your contractor didn't, didn't apply for a permit? I mean, it, it's, you know.
She didn't, she, she may have been, I did not ask, she may have been under the pressure that I did because he gave me an estimate, and maybe, you know, again, this is speculation on my park.
Okay, well.
That I had applied.
The, um, the construction needs inspections as you, as you go along, and, um, so I assume without a permit, there were no inspections either. And, and I, I don't know, I haven't talked with the building department about this.
It, it, these were just two posts that were, that were planted, okay.
It's, it's structural in nature and they require inspections.
Okay.
All right, well, those are all the questions I have, um. Do any board members have anything they'd like to ask?
Um, yeah, like, for Derek. Eve, go ahead.
Please.
Uh, I, I was just gonna ask if I drove by this afternoon to take a look, and it was so, I, I have not seen a carport like that, I thought it was, it's kind of an interesting shape, um. I wondered if you, and that's not really our responsibility anyway to know exactly what it looks like, but I, or to care about it, but I, I wondered if any, if you'd heard from any neighbors, or if there are any neighbors maybe who are gonna speak with, that you're aware of, if anybody had spoken about it, because that.
Actually, they, they did, they, they, they liked it. Uh, a, a person down the road, I'll be happy to share the name, she asked me where I got it and who installed it, and I gave her that information, I don't know whether she followed up. And another neighbor on Cedar Lane also asked me, she left a note on me and asked me again, who, where did I get it, who was the manufacturer, and, you know, the manufacturer is not actually Home Depot, but it's Powerum, a company, um, so I gave her that information and who installed it. Be, uh, so I gave her both, you know, and another, a, a third neighbor also asked me, so I don't know whether they were interested in the structure or what, but anyway. Yeah, because I think it is an u- an unusual.
And it, it does come out away from, you know, closer to the street, it's not, I, I expected that it was gonna be kind of just attached to the house and that that the legs were kind of away from the house, so I was surprised because it's freestanding, and it's actually closer, and I, I didn't get out to look and see if, in fact, you could have put it closer to the house, which might have actually eliminated this problem, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, it doesn't eliminate the problem of not having a permit in advance, but it, it, um, it might have, I'm, I'm not sure about that part.
Yeah, the only, the only, the only reasoning I had was because next to the house is a tree. Fortunately, so far, the, the branches are falling on the driveway, not not be beyond that, so I wa- I would have been very reluctant to put anything next to the house because of the, of a, a very mature tree that sometimes has big branches falling down on the driveway, and so I avoid that when you're parking my car next to the house because of that tree.
This, this is after the fact, but, oh, I'm serious, excuse me, uh, Eve, if, if you have anything.
I, I, that's all, that's all I have to say at the moment.
Okay, I mean, there, there were alternatives to doing it in the front. Um, the, the driveway could have been extended a little bit beyond the tree, and, and the, the, the structure could have been behind the house, you know, in the area behind the house. My concern is there are several other houses on the block that, with the exception of the tree, um, are in the same situation you're in, they have shorter driveways, the driveways don't extend back, some of them do, and, um, and this, this puts a structure clearly in the setback, and, um, it, uh, quite frankly, in my opinion, creates a bad precedent. And, um, so, I mean, um, I, I really do appreciate your situation, and, and, uh, I don't wanna make light of it, but, you know, I, I, uh, I have an, I have an issue with this. And, uh, I'd like to hear from other board members on this. Or Mr. Bruce, anybody.
I have a question, if we deny this, what happens?
Excuse me?
If we deny this, what happens?
Unfortunately, if we deny it, it has to be moved or taken out. Um, quite frankly, it's, it appears, it's actually a very nice and simple design, and, uh, with the exception of the two concrete supports in the ground, it could be taken down and moved. But it's just, it, it's a, it's, it's a difficult situation. It's a very simple structure, and I appreciate the situation, but, um, it, it's, uh, it puts the board in a very difficult situation. Yes, Donna?
Yeah, I, I agree that, um, this creates a bad precedent for the neighborhood, especially when other neighbors seem to think it's a good idea, perhaps. Um, ma'am, you gave us a, um, an estimate for two thousand nine hundred, looks like thirty-five dollars and sixty-two cents, is that indeed what you paid?
Yes, correct.
And.
That was the estimate, that was the estimate, and that's what I paid in August when I had it done.
Okay, so when it was done in August, were you still in the hospital then?
I was, I, okay, I was, I was going to doctors basically because, okay, okay, I had a seizure and I had an accident, and what happened, I had to go to several doctors because although I explained to them that was, this was probably due to a a meningioma that I have, uh, they thought it was a heart attack, so I kept on going to different doctors to look for everything, you know, that could possibly, which is more common than than having a seizure because of a benign brain tumor, so far benign. Um, so, so, and that's why I was sort of, I felt okay, but I still had to go to the, to the different doctors, to a neurologist, to a neurosurgeon, to a, the general doctor, you know, and I, in the hospital, I was two days, but then I had, I had to obey a series of things that I had to do, to have some blood tests done, so these were taking priority, and I'm grateful to my neighbors that were taking me to my appointment because, uh, you know, like I had a twenty-four hour E E G that I really had to have a, somebody accompany me, so there was, everything was sort of intermeshed with this, and I apologize to.
No, I, I, I'm sorry you had to go through all that, and I certainly hope you're getting some relief, but you, you did understand that they were putting it in, in August.
Yes, so the, the thing, in the meantime, and things were rolling, I, I guess the, the, the constructs, the C M remodeling assumed that I had, I had moved things along, okay? Maybe that.
If, um, if, if he's a licensed contractor, he should have called for inspections. And if he didn't call for inspections, then that's quite frankly, a violation of the building code, now, we don't, we don't, you know, deal with the building code here, but I, I, again, and I'm not, I'm not trying to, uh, upset you, please, uh, I, I don't wanna do that, but it, it needed to be inspected as you went along to make sure the, the hole was dug properly and the reinforcing that was required was there, and, and the depth of the, the depth of the footings was correct. Uh, so it's, and, and all of that wasn't done. And, and, um, so that's problematic, I mean, that's something that whether we approve this or not, has to be resolved with the building department, and that's not us. But, but, excuse me, let me finish, please, and, and, um, and, and your contractor, who is, if he, if he is licensed, uh, should have known all that. And, uh, and he should not have proceeded without a permit, a, a building permit, which quite frankly, if you had applied for a building permit without getting the proper zoning in place for the variance, when it, um, when it went to our zoning officer for his review prior to going to the building department, he would have recognized that it needed a variance. So, yeah, it's, there were a number of different things that went on here, and, and, um, and I can, like I said before, I really can sympathize with your situation, but, you know, please understand my position in this right now, because, um, I understand it happened, but, and, and you're sorry that it happened, and I, I, I feel that sincere, but it's still a problem.
Uh, okay, um.
May I ask you a question?
Excuse me, George, can, George?
Sorry? May I speak?
Yeah, please, George, speak.
Okay, this is, um, possibly to Ms. Casey, Mr. Bridger, which is.
George, could you speak up, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Better, yeah. Yes, sir.
Uh, the question is, is probably addressed to Mr. Richard, Mrs. Casey, which is the lapse on the part of the contractor, notwithstanding the responsibility of the owner, uh, essentially, uh, I mean, can't you get the contractor to say, you screwed up, now move it? You, you, you made it a horrible situation for me by not getting a permit, by not going through zoning, by not having building inspection. It would seem to me you have some leverage over that contractor to do something for you to rectify the situation, and I don't know what legal or administrative remedies there might be, and that's why I address this to, to Mr. Bridger, Mrs. Casey.
Well, I, I mean, it's a violation to install a structure without zoning approval, so, um, you, you can't get around that, whether it was the contractor or the applicant, um, and I, I would hope she would talk about some of the constraints on the lot. Um, as you'll notice, the house is setback twenty-eight feet from the road, and the front yard setback is, or from the, from the the front, um, property line, and the front yard setback is twenty-five feet, so there's really nowhere in the front yard that this structure could be placed without requiring a variance. The setback from the side of the house to the property line is fifteen feet, and there's an eight-foot side yard setback, so even if it was placed directly on the side of the house, it was still encroaching the side yard setback. The only option where it would become complying would be is if the impervious server, su- surface was increased behind the house to create a larger driveway and to slide it back fifteen feet from the side yard, um. Well, I guess it would be, it could be five feet from the, uh, property line as it, it's a, as an accessory structure, so, but there really isn't any, um, place in the current driveway to place it that it would comply, so, I mean, that's, that's part of the problem.
Steve?
Yes.
What I'm struggling with on this is whether, not the question of today, but had this been presented to us, would we have approved it? I don't think we would have.
I, well, I wouldn't have.
I don't think I would have either, and I, I, so the question really isn't, you know, did we leave it now because it's already been built, but the question is, should it, you know, I wouldn't have approved it in the first place, and like you said, I'd hate to make this a precedent setting for the street or any of the neighborhoods or anything like that, I, I think it needs to come down or be moved or, you know, go through a proper.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, Stephen, I think that, uh, it, in that neighborhood, there's quite a few houses that have any garages, and very similar situations, and if, if we were to allow this to go forward, then, um, there'd be, I think, imagine like, a number of people trying to do the same. Um, so, yeah, I think, um, we should try and see if we can find a way to get it placed in a place that is within the, uh, within the, the proper setbacks.
Well, I, you know, again, not to try to figure this out, but the, this structure, which is very nice, is bolted to the footing, those two concrete piers that went in. So, I mean, they could be, it could be unbolted, dismantled, and after, after proper permits and waivers are granted, if any, it can be moved. Um, I, I, uh, and, and like I said, I think we all, we all, uh, can sympathize with your, you know, the problems you've had, and, and none of us would make light of that, but it puts us in a very awkward situation because, again, as, as Mr. Davich said, there are a number of houses in that area and other parts of Princeton that have constraints like this, and, um, you know, it's, it's, um, building in the front yard is, is very difficult. We've had a number of people and, you know, come to us and with all sorts of, of, um, applications for a garage, I can think of one that was a few years ago on, uh, on Hodge Road in a very big house, and, um, he had an issue with a tree, as you had, a little different issue, but, but he wanted to build in the front yard, and after, uh, you know, lengthy discussion, we denied that. So, so that's the problem it puts us in right now.
But let me make this clarification, though, this is not a garage. If you see it, it's a pretty light structure, it's inobtrusive, so, you know, I would not compare this to a garage, really.
I think that the.
That's not to buy too mu- too much more space than my parked car, because I, 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 I always park my car slightly in front of the house to avoid the tree.
Yeah, no, I, I, I have a picture of it right here, I took a picture the other day, and, uh, and it's not the fact that it's not a garage, it's a structure, as you said, and any structure requires an approval and a building permit, a zoning permit and a building permit. And whether it's enclosed or open, it's still a structure in the front yard, which is regulated.
May I ask a question, too?
Sure.
Can people hear me?
Um, yeah.
Like, is, can, could we deny this, let's suspend its effect pending application for a proper variance, moving it to the back, extending the, the driveway? In other words, give a set amount of time, I don't know, sixty days to come with, with a plan?
But George, I don't thi- does it need a variance if it's in the rear yard, Derek?
May not, depending on where it's placed.
Five feet from the property line.
Yeah.
All right, so, I guess, George, the answer is, it sounds as if there's a compliant location where it can be moved to in the, uh, further back towards the rear of the property, so I don't know on what basis there would be a reason to continue this application, because she wouldn't, the applicant wouldn't need a variance for that.
Right, well, I mean.
If, if we deny it, she has to tear it down, right?
Correct. She has to move it.
Yes, to move it.
Tearing it down is not, doesn't sound like it's destroying it, though, um, George, it sounds like it's just moving it or relocating it. If I understand what, what Steve was saying, it's unboltin' it, moving it to the back of the house, that doesn't require a variance, so.
Right, depending on where it's placed, but, but again, the, the proper drawings would have to be prepared, submitted to the building department, reviewed by our zoning officer, and then move forward.
So essentially, a simple denial would permit all of that to take place?
Sure, I would think, right, Karen?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So, I, I have a question for, uh, Derek, it, it's, it's not sufficient to just move it the, the three feet or three and a half feet towards the house because the side yard is still encroached, is that correct? There's nowhere. the side yard is still encroached, is that correct? There's nowhere forward of the house that works.
No, it's the it's the front yard setback. It's twenty five feet, so nothing can be in at twenty five feet, accessory structures cannot be located within a front yard setback, they can be located in a side yard setback. So, I thought I understood from Miss, the coup that the it might, almost might fit right next to the house, but I thought there was a tree there or some kind of other issue that
Yeah, I see the tree in the photos, yeah, I had seen in the application, it said, i- it had noted the prevailing, but it is the twenty five that applies, not the
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, and and I I see that the tree actually looks i- i- it it looks farther back, that it it shouldn't be an issue with the the structure, but I I do agree that it's fortunate that you actually have something that you don't have to demolish, you it it's only a matter of relocating. So it, you know, that that seems possible.
It's not, it's not a, it's not a a ten-minute deal, but it's not total demolition either.
And and I would say it's true that it's not a full structure, it's not a garage, but it's it's not nothing, and when I saw it kind of in, you know, towards the front of of the house, I thought, well, I think it looks cool, but maybe other people in the neighborhood, I guess that's why I brought it up, I thought, some people might say, what is that? And and yet, they might just, you know, they wouldn't, they might be fine, or it would be less intrusive if it was lined up with the house that was farther back. But you know, the fact that it's could be setting a precedent, would be setting a precedent that might we might be unhappy with, with, I think, is is a big part of it, too.
You know, it's just, it just presents, it it puts us in an awkward situation, because again, there's there's no justification for putting it in the front yard setback. And as Karen mentioned, there are, and Derek mentioned, there are compliant locations available on the site to accommodate this.
Just one point I wanted to make, cer- certainly creating a precedent is is something that I understand the board's concerned with, but the other issue here is that, remember, as in all Derek's memos, when the applicant wants a C two variance, he listed, what are the purposes of zoning? Put another way, what is a basis under the C two to approve a variance? The applicant is here tonight on her own. So I guess it it falls to the board to look at this criteria, to say, aside from a precedent, is there any criteria here you see that would support the application? Well, I mean, some of it is broad criteria, you know, is this gonna promote public health, safety and welfare? Adequate light air and open space, and I'm not going to read them all. Promote population densities, desirable visual environment. So aside from the concern about a precedent, there is also this specific application that you need to look at, to say, do you believe it's going to satisfy any of that criteria? Separate and apart from what concerns did you have if another neighbor said, well, I'm going to do the same thing, I like it? Because each application, of course, is always looked at on its own facts, but i- it it does have to promote at least one of these criteria for you to be able to approve it.
And Karen, as you were saying, we have we have to consider the negative criteria. The negative criteria, you know, without substantially impairing the intent and purposes of the zone plan and ordinances.
Correct.
I think it just flies in the face of them, and it doesn't meet the standard.
All right. Do any of the board, any other members have any questions or comments before we open this up to the public? Okay. We're we're going to open this portion, this portion of the hearing to the public to get any comments from neighbors or interested parties who may be in this hearing. Would you like to add anything before we we do that, before we open it up to the public? Okay, well, I guess at this point, we'll we'll open it up to the public. Claudia, is there anyone in the audience who has indicated they'd like to speak on this application?
Yes, yes, one second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I move over two people, please raise your hands.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. and Mrs. Chang, would you please give us your address first?
My address is forty forty Henry.
Okay, and, sir, do you swear or affirm that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I swear.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Okay, I'm close, right? Next to Nikki. I I I saw the view, the the structure, I think it's good and good looking, and I don't think it's have any safety safety problem, so basically, we 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 have no objection. Stand there, and it's good, good, good for her car, and good looking for the envi- the ne- neighbor, the 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 neighborhood. I I I don't think unless it's against the law. I have no, no objection for. It it's too, too bad or too cost, too much cost for for Nikki to do that, to remove it. It it could be quite a ex- expensive things she has done for for herself, so basically I and my wife we're we're not object to anything. That's it.
Thank you.
Steve, I think you're muted.
I'm sorry, I'm muted, yeah, I have a a dog here and he's barking. Is there anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Chang, Mr. and Mrs. Chang. Is there anyone else in the audience, Claudia, who's indicated they'd like to speak?
Yes, Jennifer Cohen.
Hi, I'm here with my husband, Stephen Petracca.
We can't see you, we can't see you.
Sorry, ironically, I myself also got out of the hospital today, but I'm calling in for this. Um, which is why
Man, before you and your husband testify, can we get your address, please?
Yes, we live at forty six Henry Avenue.
Alrighty, and do you both swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I just want to say that to me, for me, as a neighbor whose yard abuts this yard, it looks like a bus shelter and is totally incongruous to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Right, I think you touched on the point of the the C two variance requirements, and I I can see nothing in my interpretation of it, or that was presented, meaning that would promote any sort of of those requirements, it was done without a permit, it was done without zoning, it was just put up. Everyone has trees in their their yards, everybody has birds, everybody has things that could have been thought out prior to this being erected, and frankly, the costs of dismantling it and moving it aren't really shouldn't be taken into account here. My question is about the setback for the side, my understanding is that it was eight feet on the the sides of the lot and fifteen from the back from for for a structure, and I believe Derek said five feet, so could, is there any clarification we could get, because that that would be actually moving closer to, you know, if if you move it back, it's actually closer to my property, which I have to look out the window and see that, and there's nothing in the neighborhood even close to looking like that.
Your property is, your property is, is you face the house to the right?
Yeah, but it's on Henry, so it's kind of the 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 rear part of my, the two lots intersect. They're not side by side.
Okay, so you're behind, you're behind the house.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think, Derek, can you clarify that, I believe, the accessory structure?
Accessory structures are subject to a different setback than than the principal building, which is eight feet for a principal building, but it's five feet for an accessory structure, so if she extended her driveway and
But but she's not even, like, we're talking about a twenty five-foot setback, she's not even anywhere near that. We're talking thirteen feet of she's off by thirteen feet, if you're talking about twenty five feet from the road, so just to make it clear how egregious it is.
No, we all know it's in the front yard setback, the setback, the house is, as Mr. Bridger said, or the house is twenty eight feet back, the setback is twenty five feet. The the structure encroaches totally in the front yard. If it was moved, it would be subject as an accessory structure to a five-foot side yard setback, and I believe, what's the rear yard in that area?
It is, excuse me, fifteen.
Yeah, so the the lot itself is a hundred and sixty feet deep, so it's it's more than sufficient to handle a structure like this behind the house. And again, set away from the property line, so this could be easily accommodated by extending the driveway and relocating the structure, and it would fall within the, I'll call it, the site envelope that would allow for this.
Understood.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else? To add? Okay. All right, Claudia, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Mr. Floyd, are you speaking? Mr. Floyd?
He's muted, there we go.
Okay. Yeah, just briefly, there's been some comments that I don't, I would have said, it is a hundred and sixty foot deep lot with a lot of room, I believe the the tree that the applicant is concerned with is actually on the neighbor's property, it's not next to the house. And I do worry, you know, as, you know, a member of the neighborhood, Harris Road, not Cornahan, but still, as the applicant mentioned, there's other people that have expressed interest in this structure, which to me means they might want to put it up, and I don't see how the zoning board could approve this and deny anybody else. If they wanted to put it in the front yard setback or in violation of any setback, you know, whether the structure's attractive or not, you know, that's that's subjective. So I think it's a little bit of a slippery slope here to approve it, and I haven't heard, and it's been mentioned, anything that sort of supports it code-wise, as one of the neighbors mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Claudia, anyone else like to speak?
I see no more answer.
Okay, so we'll close the public portion of the hearing and ask the applicant if what we do at this point is, we allow you to make a closing statement, and then we go into executive session, which means we discuss it amongst ourselves, and then ask for a member of the zoning board to make a motion, whether to approve or not approve. So if you'd like to say something before we do that, please, now's the time to do it.
Well, I I will, I appreciate, first of all, your time and looking at this, again, I apologize, it was after the fact, but there were extenuating circumstances. And I will explore with my contractor about extending the driveway towards the back. Because contrary to the last speaker, I have lived in this house for a number of years, and I know there is always danger by, you know, although you know, there is an error around that tree, which basically, I I like it very much, that tree, because it provides shade. So, but that prevents me from parking my car in next to the house, therefore, I have to look at the possibility of extending the driveway and putting the, seeing if the contractor can relocate the two posts. So, tha- that's it, and again, I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. We'll go into executive session now, if anybody would just like to, if there's any discussion in on this, or if not, if someone would like to make a motion.
I'll move to deny.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Okay. Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Chen?
So, yes, is agreeing with the denial, right?
Yes.
Yes, and I do have a question, is is there, do we need any language around what length of time is is permissible to have the structure in place until some
I I I would have to defer to to our zoning officer and and an attorney. I don't know the answer to that.
Derek, right now, is there a notice of violation outstanding? Or did the applicant, once you noted, once you advised the applicant, she agreed to file her application, is that correct?
Yes. I mean, it has to be removed, I'll work with the applicant, I would say thirty days is is more than enough time to maybe we could figure out an alternative location, and we're not, but
Well, of course. It needs to be a condition, or is that something that you can address if you need to through a notice of violation?
I I if it's not done within thirty days, then the next step would be a summons to go to court.
So I would, I will, I will contact the the installer to at least dismantle it, so that I'll comply with the the decision, and then I will, I will see. So it will, it will be a two-step thing, first to dismantle it as soon as possible, and then see if they can relocate it, extending first the driveway, because that will that will imply removing some aged rose bushes at the back, so that they can extend the driveway and ask for a a permit to relocate it there, but it has to and ask for a, a permit to relocate it there, but it has to but this will be dismantled, I mean, which, which is what, you know, the, your primary concern is basically getting rid of it, but but relocating it it, which may take some time. So, but it will be dismantled, but I mean, within the framework that you outlined.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Coulson?
Muted.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
You're muted.
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes, and, and once again, I'm sorry that we, we had to do this, but it's it's something that appears to be correctable, so thank you for the offer of taking it down and relocating. Okay, I guess that's the end of the hearing. All right, and we have nothing else this evening, so I believe we're adjourned.
Yeah, we'll see you on the seventeenth next week.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.